In order while they do deliver the invocation please.
Yeah.
We'd like to thank the opportunity to gather together. We just want to give you thanks for everyone that's been out working through the storms and that we've had very few injuries. We just ask you to keep blessing the community, bless the state, and everyone that is conducting business in this and trying to take care of these situations. Amen.
Something else to pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the empire under the United States of America, to the people who live here, for which they stand, for what they believe in, for their God, and for their miserable, with liberty and justice as our own.
Counsel, the agenda pretty much will remain same except I'm adding David Hall from the mayor's report, feeling it's right his name after the fire report. Uh, I got him at the last minute, just halfway home. With that, would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda?
Shall we?
A motion?
Second.
Of the second discussion? Being in all favor, but with show of hand? Thank you, counsel. Let it be known that John Fouse is not here this evening. Quick story on that. The day before yesterday, it was early, I called my city council member slash Georgia Power representative, and I said, "John, where are you?" He said, "Atlanta, Georgia." So, uh...
That's good.
So, all of our, all of our, all of our forces went south, and we evidently got whatever Georgia Power decided to send to us yesterday and whatever represent of Georgia. But anyway, so he's not with us this evening, and he told me he probably won't be back until then, part of the week. The minutes, uh, August 7th, 2017 meeting?
Mayor Weaver called the meeting to order promptly at 6:00 p.m. He requested council member John Fouse get the invocation. Council member Ann Smith led her side of the pledge allegiance. Mayor Weaver asked that the agenda be reviewed and approved by council. Council member Jim Loney made a motion to approve the agenda. Council member Tony Fountain seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. City clerk pleads to hold read the minutes, the July 10th, 2017 regular meeting. Council member Sunny Proctor made a motion to adopt the minutes as read. Council member Jim Loney seconded the motion. Motion carried unanimously. Council member Jim Loney stated that he would like to clarify for the record his motion in item B under old business. He stated that he did not intend to say the word demand in his motion. He meant to say that in 2018, there is a possibility that a greater portion of the cost of health insurance be a burden on the city budget. Item A under old business, Mayor Weaver recognized council member Jim Loney regarding his recommendation at, at the last regular meeting that a committee be formed to determine the future of the Roper parole property on Spring Street. Council member Jim Loney stated that he would like to wait and announce the committee members at the next regular council meeting, no action taken. Item A under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized Paul Corr of the Jasper Merchants Association to present to council for approval to close in North Main Street for a car show music event to be held November 4th, 2017 from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. He stated that the merchants also were asking that the city set up a stage with music for this event. Council member Tony Fountain made a motion to allow North Main Street to close for this event. Council member Ann Smith seconded the motion. Discussion followed. Motion carried unanimously. Item B under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized planning and zoning director Sunny Underwood and Carlo Del Pizzo owner of Winzology. Mr. Del Pizzo is asking permission to close Stegall Street next to the business and permission to sell beer in this area for the Friday of Jeep Fest weekend. Mayor Weaver opened the floor for discussion. Council member Jim Loney made a motion to approve the application for the special event license with the stipulation that the city manager and the city attorney have the authority to regulate the event. Council member Ann Smith seconded the motion. Discussion followed. It was also stated by Mr. Del Pizzo that the city would be covered by liability insurance the amount would, to be determined. Motion carried unanimously. Item C under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized water and sewer superintendent David Hall to present for council approval. Repairs needed for the lift station located at Liberty Lane. Mr. Hall stated that there were two quotes to replace the valves and check valves in the discharge pit. HD Supply quoted $11,875 and Ford Line quoted $11,715,51. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion. Council member John Fouse made a motion to accept the low quote from Ford Line at a cost of $11,715,51. Council member Tony Fountain seconded the motion. Discussion followed. Motion passed unanimously. Mr. Hall stated that pump number one at the lift station also required replacement. He stated that the pump would replace a 200 gallon per minute with a 250 gallon per minute pump. Mr. Hall stated that there were two quotes, Swanee Flight at 38,400 and Atlanta Amtech at 39,400. He recommended the city go with the Swanee Flight quote. Council member Tony Fountain made a motion to purchase the pump from Swanee Flight at the low bid of 38,400. Council member Jim Loney seconded the motion. Motion passed unanimously. Item D under new business, Mayor Weaver stated that he had met with the Tiffens County School Superintendent, who stated that the Board of Education would like for the city to take back over the street on Dixie Street extension. A letter of a question, the school system has passed heretofore. Council member Jim Loney made a motion that the city take back Dixie Street from the Board of Education. Council member Ann Smith seconded the motion. Discussion followed. Motion passed unanimously. Item E under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized Molly Waters to discuss the need for striping for the city parks, parking lots. He stated that he was paying three quotes and will present the quotes for council approval at, at the next month's regular meeting. No action taken. Item F under new business, Mr. Waters presented the one bid that the city received for the Woodbridge repairs. Railworks Track Systems, Inc. presented a bid for $44,000 to make the necessary repairs to reopen the bridge and also made, make recommended work that could prevent problems in the future. Mayor Weaver said that this would be paid out of these lost money he collected. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion. Council member Jim Loney made a motion to approve the repairs of the Woodbridge. Council member Sunny Proctor seconded the motion. Discussion followed. Motion passed unanimously. Item G under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized finance director Lisa Bull to present to council a resolution to authorize the mayor to execute a long-term lease under the GMA financing program. Council member Tony Fountain made a motion to approve the resolution. Council member Jim Loney seconded the motion. Motion passed unanimously. Economic developer Jerry McPetal gave a report to the city. Finance director Lisa Bull gave a financial report for the month of July 2017. Molly Waters gave the animal control report for the month of July 2017. Chief Red Lovell gave a report of police activities for the month of July 2017. Chief Steve Roper gave a report of fire activities for the month of July 2017. Council member John Fouse gave an update on JYSJ activities, being no other business to come before council. Council member Jim Loney made a motion to adjourn the meeting. Council is scheduled to convene next, the regular council meeting to be held September 13th, 2017.
We didn't, we had no little time.
No. I'll take it.
Okay, well, you took care of a lot of that one statement, okay. With that being said, would entertain a motion?
Make a motion, except the minute to distribute it. Read.
Motion to approve, as read. Motion to second discussion. Being in all favor, but with show of hand? Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Lisa. Under old business, first item A is parole property. Counselman Loney?
Uh, actually, at last month's meeting, we agreed together, a committee to look at possible uses for the parole property. Committee was formed of council owner Dr. Sunny Proctor, Rick Jasperz, Marty Callahan, Amy Lee, Jack Dunn, and Amelia Mathantire. Amelia was not able to attend a meeting, she was in Houston, uh, becoming a grandmother, I believe, so we excused her from this meeting. One of the things that came...
Wait, wait, wait. Was Amelia there during the hearing?
Yes, yeah.
She was.
Okay. She's still coming back today, I'd like to know.
Okay. I wasn't sure, we talked about that the other day.
Yeah, my understanding was she was there during the...
Who's there? And Captain Jim?
Uh, we have had an organization meeting. One of the things that came out of it was that I was going to make a presentation to the industrial authority about potential uses for the second house, what do we call the second house, on the property. There have been two meetings of the industrial authority that had to be canceled for different reasons, one of them today. A lot of the members still cleaning up and getting ready from, from the storm. We will get that meeting and we will discuss the potential uses of the second home and move on it.
And not only that, you're looking at other uses for the entire property?
Yes, but one, that's, that's still being discussed, the real action items going before the industrial authority and letting them know what their thoughts are and getting their, their buy-in. With them being owners of the property, I feel it's necessary to meet with them.
Okay, so basically, this will be an item under old business the next month for an update?
Yes, I would request it stay on as old business until we can come up with some decisions.
And is political justice grinding slowly?
Uh, we just busy people on the industrial authority. No, no real reason other than if they're busy.
Well, all the other issues, getting this together, that's taking quite a while, so...
Yeah. This is, this is the first month of it, so...
You do have two insurance agents I know on the, uh...
Industrial department.
And so we'll be looking forward to hearing from you next month. Item B, striping city park and lots and other, I think we had other striping to go as well, didn't we, Lonnie?
Yes, sir. We had the, the parking lots at the park and also one in the ball field. And I have got the one quote from Brown and Asphalt Company. I've been in touch with Mr. Stillwell about them giving us a quote. He indicated, I talked to him again today, he indicated that he had sent us one, but I did not receive it. They emailed it, it didn't come through. So, he was going to send us another one today. It did not come through, so he is working with one of their offices in Florida, and they're gonna look at it and send us a quote, a quote, a bid on that.
So you have one...
I still have just the one.
Okay.
But I am working with the other two, I haven't gotten it.
Is that not been a reasonable amount of time that we've waited for a bid?
I thought it had, and he indicated that he did, the way I understood it, he did send one and we didn't get it. And then I was doing some other things, I didn't follow up on it maybe as fast as I should, but...
So you want to table this one more month? I mean, there's no big rush to striping.
I would, I would like to give them a chance because I have been working with them, if that's okay with council.
We'll just table it one more time?
I have worked with that company before, in fact, I gave Lonnie, there was a contact. I know he's got a good email address for me. If, if it continues to be an issue, they can send it to me and I'll send it to you.
Okay, alright.
Okay.
That's good.
Uh, I guess that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Well, you'll be old business next month as well. Under new business, alcohol, alcohol special events license? Sure that's not old business? Come forth, Sonny. And Mr. Pizzi, he can come as well. You're looking all familiar, you might be a council member, not know... No, thank you.
Start giving you a check.
He knows some decision.
Careful.
Start giving you a check. Okay, Son?
Uh, Mr. Del Pizzi was here to try to seek another special event permit for the Marble Festival weekend, and...
Could we start with an update from the last one for, for the owner?
I, I spoke with the chief and I spoke with the sheriff, there were no incidents. They both told me...
Correct, chief. No incidents on Jiffy, right?
Very good.
Okay. And, uh, a lot of the council members were there and they all went smooth. Now, we didn't sell, it wasn't a beer fest, slamming beers. I might have ordered 50 cases of beer total, and, uh, and what they do is they, they kind of give, for that event, they'll give you 50 cases and then they'll pick up whatever they don't sell. Same with the kegs, but we decided to go with cans and pour them into red glasses instead. It was easier than doing draft, I thought, and running a draft box out there. Went smooth. Probably ended up selling 30 cases out of 50, so it wasn't a drink fest, and it went smooth. We sold some wines to outside, not, not a lot, but for people that didn't want the beer, and it just went smooth and kept the... From the council end, for the perspective of what we're trying to do for the main street, did your business do well overall? It absolutely, absolutely did better than last year's Jeep Fest for us. It kept the food flowing smoother because we weren't clogged up on the inside. I think the only difference that will do next time is put more flavored beers. We had three flavors outside, and the flavors that weren't outside, people were going inside, but had they been outside, we would have kept them outside too, and just had the flow flowing a lot easier. And, uh, but yes, we definitely did more business, and, um, and like I said, we weren't overwhelmed. I think the fence area worked out well, and, um, and then we just, we took it down, and , uh, but we kept the, the orange buckets and the poles in our concrete, and we had them in stores, so because we didn't get another one, we just pulled them out, and that fencing was only like $50, so we just... Actually, one of the guys that was there at night, when we were cleaning up, um, he, we were being thrown out, he asked if he could use it for something. Oh, he's got a farm or something up on there, he said, "Yeah, go ahead, take it." That was great. Now, tell us a little bit of what's going on for the Marble Fest. Well, they're, we know they're closing the street down Saturday, 5 o'clock for, and they're gonna have entertainment and a band out there, so, and then, and it's a little confusing to me because I think it's two different organizations running Sat-, uh, the weekend. I know Sunday they're closing down again, and, uh, they're gonna have entertainment on Sunday too, but I'm not clear on whether they're closing the street on Sunday or are they closing the street on Sunday. But I know there's an event on Sunday, and both of them have bands and music. I, I think the best part about this is the city has been successful in keeping the stage in one location, and that way we're not moving 50 feet one way or the other constantly, so, uh, actually, we'll be prepared to whatever the organizations want to, with the stage, it'll be sitting at that location, which will be used for the parade, and which just will happen, Lonnie, right now, a regular cost for your visit.
Wow, yes.
You got your, uh...
Yeah, it is.
But my, my, you know, so, I'm, I'm hoping that they'll shut the street down. I think it was a nice festival, Jeep Fest, I think it works out well. People, it was mostly families that I could see. Everybody was under control, not out of hand, and, uh, and it was nice, so I, I liked the way it turned out. I'm hoping that Jeep, uh, Marble Fest and, what is Sunday, is that the music? Jerry, would you enlighten the council and myself as to the event? And the look on the chief of police face behind you?
Yeah, no, I'd be glad to. And this year, what with the Marble Festival, we should listen to a lot of input in the planning stages, and one of the things that people really wanted to see was a larger footprint of the, of the event, as well as greater impact to our local businesses. So what we've done is we've partnered with the Jasper Merchants Association so that we have activities both inside the festival grounds as well as outside the festival grounds in the central business district. So, although, and this is something new, where we are partnering with more people, we're trying to collaborate, again, to try to make this more impactful to our businesses and our community. So what is planned is, is during the day, the Marble Festival, we will have the traditional Marble Festival down at Leagun Park. We will have during the day, spearheaded by the Jasper Merchants Association, we will have the Georgia Marble Festival Main Street Experience. They will have bands during the day, they will have retail vendors on the street. The street will be closed in the morning for the road race. It will reopen till 3 o'clock. At 3 o'clock, it will then again close in preparation for the Jacob Ryan concert with opening act, C.C. Morgan, and, uh, and then it will be closed during that time. The next day on Sunday, there will also be music as well as, uh, retail booths up on Main Street, again, down at the festival grounds at Leagun Park, we will have the children's area, we will have the arts and crafts vendors. It will be very similar to what we've done in the past, although some enhancements there. So on Sunday, again, we will have activities in town. We will also have a, a tractor pulling a trolley, and we will be shuttling people from Main Street down to the festival grounds all day long, just repetition, and we see that as an attraction unto itself, as well as a way to keep people flowing between the two points, and again, trying to bring more people up to both locations for the benefit of everyone. So, I hope that kind of gives you a better perspective of what's happening, and, uh, I guess I could skip my report after a while.
Well, the festival on Sunday, of course, comes to an end. What time would all this go down?
The, the activities on Sunday, we expect to, to start at noon and run till 6 o'clock.
6 o'clock?
6 o'clock.
Is there a band on Main Street on Sunday also?
On Sunday, the, again, the Merchants Association is spearheading that aspect of it, and they are planning to have music and bands on Main Street throughout the day on Sunday, as well as the retail vendors, so it will, it will mirror that duties on Saturday, except for the concert at night.
Suddenly, that will run off different bands throughout the day, or is there a time period that starts and ends?
Uh, I don't know that little detail right now, Carl. I think they're still trying to put all the pieces together, but the plan is to have, you know, bands throughout the day, and I don't know the sequence or timeframes of each.
Now, were they not going to turn this around and use the courthouse lawn?
Yeah, and what we've, what we have, you know, agreed to do, Mayor, is to, you know, have this stage placed one time. Because of how it's constructed, it really doesn't have to be turned or anything like that, so they're planning to have kind of their area for the attendees, you know, for the music on the lawn of the courthouse, and then at night, we have the larger concert.
No, we're talking Sunday.
Just, yeah, I'm sorry, on Sunday and Saturday, they're planning to have kind of the sitting area for the music on the courthouse lawn.
Okay, well, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Jerry. Sunday, will the street be closed?
To my knowledge, on Sunday, the street was not planned to be closed.
Okay.
Just, just on Saturday, the road race, and then starting at 3 o'clock for the concert.
Okay, that does some confusion, uh...
No, I'm sorry, I wasn't making myself...
Well, you can see behind you, Chief Lovell was still trying to figure out if they're gonna come in on Sunday.
I think the Merchants Association want it first, but they understand that at this, at this time, it's not planning to be closed, so that's, I'm just passing on.
We can, we can look at the crowds and, and Sunday is probably, in the, in the past, Sunday is when everyone's leaving town, breaking down their tents, and going, so you're looking at 5:10 to 6:00, that means Monday's gonna be a breakdown day, uh, at the festival, except, Jerry.
Well, they, they pack up and leave pretty quick, quite honestly. I'm not trying to be...
Okay, well, they leave, what time will they leave? 6:00?
Well, they're getting closer at 6:00. Actually, it's, traditionally, it's been open till 5:00 on Sunday, so it's a little bit later this year, so I suspect, I think we'll probably start winding down at 5:00, and I suspect the vendors will probably be packed up and gone, uh, you know, largely by 8:00 o'clock.
Okay, alright, now, with all this said, what do you want? Okay, so, I would like to have a beer on for it for Saturday and Sunday, only on Sunday if they close the street. If they don't close the street down, then it's not going to be feasible to shut down because they're gone. Right, so, so that, but, but it doesn't, if you, if you give me Saturday and Sunday, it, it doesn't make a difference. This way, if Sat-, Sunday they close, I have it. If they don't close, it doesn't matter, I just say aside, no business as, as usual. Yeah, and who would, one question, who was the band that played the Jeep Fest? Because that was a good band, let me tell you.
Shawty and...
Shawty and...
Sorry.
That's alright, I just, they were really good. I think it'll be the new house band, it's your... No, no, they're a little too big, didn't it? But, but let's talk about Sunday. Uh, you're talking about Stegall, from your, corner of your building down to, uh, the corner of Whitfield Street, or the edge of Whitfield Street. I say, counsel, it really wouldn't hurt much if he, if he needed it, then people could walk across the street using the rules of the road across the street, uh, because vehicles would be going through, and he would have a large patio if, if it turned out to be a large crowd for him. I don't, I'm not trying to be skeptic, but I don't see that happening on Sunday, the first year in Jasper, it might be next year, year after, but I, I, the council could give him a flat by ear. Yeah, I mean, if, like I said, if it, if it doesn't, I, I agree with you, don't think Sunday's gonna be... You're not normally open on Sunday, are you? No, we're not. We, we did last year for Marble Fest and, and the Sunday for the Jeep Fest, and this year too we did, but, uh, we're, we got our plans down the road to start opening on Sunday. Right now, I'm just short in manpower. And once I get the extra manpower, then I'll be able to do it, be able to rotate my, my guys. With, with that, counsel, I think you have plenty of information to come up with a motion, so we're gonna let the council member come up with a motion. Any council member?
I'd like to motion to approve the alcohol official events license for Saturday and Sunday at, at your discretion, if, if needed.
Yeah, I mean, if it's a light day on Sunday, we could just move it right to the front, that brick paper area in the front too, because it might be a little lighter.
Like you said, it might be a little patio area.
Yeah, and I'm playing by ear, you know, we'll see. It looks like it's not...
And what we'll do is we'll reinforce our yellow stopper pedestrian signs on Main Street that day.
Well, yeah, and we, and the way we set up for Jeep Fest was, the crosswalk, we, we started behind the crosswalk, so that kept the flow going down and down the street, so...
That was a very good setup that you had.
Yeah, and we're, I was, I was happy with it. Worked better than I thought. Okay, need a second?
Second.
Any, any discussion?
We, we fix.
Any other discussion, ask the second?
Yeah, I've got some, some concerns, people walking from the rest truck across the road to the courthouse. Just have to be careful with it.
Yeah, and we still don't know for sure that Sunday, the street's gonna be open or closed, Main Street. Well, no, it's gonna be open. It is. On Sun-, on Saturday, it's closed, I understand.
I would say that, you know, traffic is without a doubt the lightest on Sunday, for sure.
I think, um, you, you will actually be a byproduct, they'll come over to you after they get through the music, because they're gonna be facing...
But the big concerns, what I would be more concerned about, not for mine, for me, but from your standpoint, if the street isn't closed and the band is stationed where it was for Marble, uh, Jeep Fest, are people gonna be standing in the street and back?
They're gonna be facing the courthouse side. So, the other side, they're back, people will be back, they're back, so we to the courthouse side. And we'll... We'll put cones out to pretend the man is being hit by, and we'll... Okay, like I said, that makes more sense than... We will have a patrolman probably available, and if he gets out, if we're to get out of hand, we'd have to make a, a call ourselves, as to, for safety purposes. Uh, but right now, I think Sunday in Jasper is usually very mild, even on, on the Marble Festival days, so I think it'd be a nice evening in the park and on Main Street if this, the band performs well. What bands performing on Sunday?
I don't have any idea.
Jay and Mike's getting those.
Yeah, they, they plan to have various ones.
Okay, well, see, and, uh...
I think that'll work nice, the band facing the courthouse.
And if we got the issue, like Mr. Loney said, we'll probably call another officer in and, and maybe a crew to shut the street out if it gets really out of hand, but that'd be nice, we'd be busy.
And like we said too, we don't, we're not, we're not looking for people to be staggering, drunk, coming out of the fenced area, you know? We, we monitor them and we ID everybody, and if they're getting to, to the point where, you know, we have too many trips up to it, you know, my, my staff is, uh, told, they said, "It has to stop, you gotta cut them off, it's that simple, I don't want an incident."
Sunday, what are we charged for a special permit?
It depends on if you're a, uh, nonprofit or, we've, we've never issued one for a profit.
That's the last one.
It's all, until the last one, I'm only charging a hundred dollar down, somebody charged 50 for the other one.
It's a pretty good deal.
It may be, it may be in the future, three police officers.
It'll be a little opportunity.
But I, but I would like to qualify this, as you were talking, the police department's budget is based on, we, we decide that now for the whole year, and the police department's budget is becoming a big part of the city's percentage, a big part of the percentage. And as I look back there and I, I saw Chief Roper, the fire chief, look over at the chief Lovell, the police chief, with a smirk on his face, and I thought to myself, "I think the fire department should come up and help."
You know, Angel, right?
The fire, the fire chief would be up there first thing when this thing gets out of order and until the chief of police gets there to assist. and until the chief of police gets there to assist. But any, we didn't budge on this yet, we were still discussing. Any other discussion? First of all, I'd like to wish you all luck in all this and your business on Main Street. And if you can't make it Jasper, you're not going to be able to make it. We've shut the street down for you to a heartbeat, it looks like.
No, I, I, listen, that's all part of growing the downtown Main Street event area, and it's, and I don't mind growing with it, and, but I want to do it right, because I want to keep growing with it. I don't want to say, "Okay, last year's incident, last month's incident was a disaster, and we're never doing that again." So I look for longevity of it, not just one, one event, so.
Any other discussion? Be in all favor of the show hand?
Sorry, Mayor, but just to say, it really did help, it was a good event, Jeep Fest, which really helped out because we were closed last Tuesday with a power outage. We lost Monday and Tuesday this week. But that cushion really is going to come in handy this week. From that half.
Any other discussion? Be in all favor of the show hand? Thank you, and again, good luck.
Thank you.
Uh, we'll be watching that day, and we'll probably have some phone numbers for you to call if we get out of hand. That we can, I'm talking about for traffic wise.
All right, yeah, yeah, well, and like I said, if it gets to, we can always shut it down and bring it inside until if the traffic gets too crazy.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, out of B. Chief Roper. We're talking about the, still talking about the roof.
I just want to clarify that you don't want me screwing with the police chief, right?
No, I just, I didn't want to smirk at him because he's all upset, he's not going to be here.
I promise I didn't elbow him.
Yeah, and also, we don't want him carrying weapons. Max is rude.
Good evening, Councilman, Mayor. As I informed you at the workshop, the roof project is incomplete at the fire station. The burden barn's been completed and done. WNS Construction, who has awarded the job for roughly $319,000, decided they do not want the job. Fountain Roofing has renegotiated their price to $14,790, which is an increase of $2,471, but it's still below my $15,000 budget. I'm here to request that we approve Fountain Roofing to take the job.
And you're saying that he was the second low bid?
He is, he was the second low bid.
Second only low bid.
And he has also given us an October 1st start date, and we contacted him to see if he would take the job.
So basically, $2,400, what?
$2,471 increase over the original.
Start October 1st?
October 1st.
And it's still under your budget, though, of $15,000?
Budget's $15,000, and his current price is $14,790.
And if they have a motion?
I make a motion, I may accept this bid, since it's under budget and the roof needs to be done.
Motion to accept the second low bid?
Yeah.
$14,790 Fountain Roofing.
Need a second?
Yes.
Motion is second, any discussion? Be in all favor of the show hand? Thank you, Council. I'll stay, you're still up.
Good evening, Mayor, again. As we discussed also at the workshop, I intend to propose a new fire engine in the 2018 budget. If you'll see in front of you, sorry I didn't get to you earlier, is a proposed spec of this vehicle that I would entertain purchasing. The second sheet is a cleaned up version of what I had for you that night on the lease agreements and stuff through the company that manufactures the vehicle, with the different inch of interest rates. I will tell you that there's a typo on this where it says first payment due, and it shows the date of October 2018. That is an expected delivery date. First payment is within 364 days from that delivery date. So you're looking at the first, if, if we purchase that truck, you're looking at first payment due roughly October 2019. This, this is a typo on the second page where it says, on the university. Yeah, that is, that is a projected delivery date, not first payment date.
So, so how many days after the delivery date did you just say?
364 days.
Why, why a whole year?
That's the delayed payment option.
Well, are we going to pay interest on that?
No, there is no interest on that delayed payment. When the truck gets delivered, our first payment is within 364 days.
So you're saying they're just so excited to sell us a $500,000 project?
Yeah, yeah, the payments do not change, there is no penalty for the delay.
Lisa, did you check the rates?
I called G and A, and they'll only do a tenure on the fire truck. And the rate that they would give us was 2.73 for 10 years.
Pretend it be an annual payment or monthly?
It would be monthly.
And this one is an annual?
It would not be a delayed anything.
Is it an annual payment?
The annual payment's a proposal of this company. And also, if we don't do a delayed payment, then you would look, you look to make a payment before the truck's actually delivered, probably.
How long would you say it would be after we put in?
Probably 12 months, we're looking at about 12 months. Could be a little shorter, depending on the volume, when we have them to go ahead, but we're looking at probably 12 months left.
Okay, so the price, the price again?
Now, the, the second page up there is simply a memo that the sale rep sent me. And I explained to you guys earlier that there would be a price increase. That price increase is 3%. And that, that is simply a copy.
What price increase is what?
3%.
I thought you said 30.
No, 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 3%. 3, 3%. And that, that simply, you know, to inform you that that would be no longer first if we choose to buy. The next page is the tag on information that I referred to at the workshop, which allows us to purchase at this time with the City of Covington, who has a bid process that's already been established. This actually explains how that works. Printed front and back, sorry I'm 50 years old, I can't work the printer. That page is printed front and back. But it explains the tag on crosshair, which allows us to purchase without bidding, simply because at this point, if we use this one, City of Covington has already done all that paperwork. Uh, it's got the verbiage that's allowed, that City of Covington allows a tag on.
And at any point in time after this, if we decide to go this route, if something happens and we decide not to purchase it, nothing, nothing's wrong as far as calling and canceling?
No, 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 there, there's nothing wrong with that. Mayor asked the price.
For the, for the record?
For the record, the price as the drawing you see in front of you is $497,500, $497,500. After November 1st, that price with a 3% increase across the board would be $512,425, which is an increase of $14,925.
And that would be if you choose to buy.
And that's if you choose to buy it exactly.
I'm forgetting, do they buy?
I, I think, I, I think what I'm asking for, to be honest with you, is the approval for a future purchase, is what I'm asking for. Assuming that we're going to buy a fire truck, I think now is the time to buy it, now's the best option.
Tell the council and the public that, that's watching, and you knew this, it's not going to be easy, right? Why would we need a fire truck?
The truck that needs replaced is a 1998 model with two, 300,000 miles on it. Once you reach 20 years of age with a fire engine, you lose points with an ISO, which is Insurance Services Office. You lose points off that engine based on its age, which makes it harder for us to keep a Class 5 insurance rating that we have. And after 20 years on the road, Engine 1 is basically worn out. If we choose to buy a new truck, it will become Engine 1. Engine 1 that we currently have on the truck I propose to replace will move down the line to Engine 3, which is a reserve truck, which means it only runs when the other two are busy. Or if it's a commercial fire, and we have to have off 3. Which will allow us to sell, if we choose to, the 89 model, which is currently in Engine 3.
And the value of that?
The value of that truck, I have no idea.
You got a speculation of?
What's worth today?
Well, you, you mentioned the other day that volunteer departments might like to have that.
Volunteer departments in South Georgia and these type of locations purchase trucks like this all the time. Because it's in their wheelhouse as far as money goes. As far as the value of that truck, I don't have a clue.
But it's got has value?
It does have value, it has value to sell. And it's a good truck, it's just old. It's like Engine 1, it's old and it's seen some use. My recommendation would be to sell it while it is worth something.
What year did you say it was?
It's 89 model, 1989.
So that asset rating, does that have a direct impact on the city or the citizens?
The citizens. Your fire department's high, it's over, and it determines what your homeowner's insurance cost, what your business owner's insurance cost. The lower the number, the better your insurance rates are, the higher the number, obviously, the worse.
Back in, back in 93, 94, 95, we had an intense effort to lower from a seven something at the time?
When I think working in the early 80s, we were 87. In the 90s, we were still a seven, and attempted to go to a five, and went to a six. We backed up, we, we were successful in going to a six from a seven. We spent about a year doing some more work, adding some more things, some more pieces to the puzzle, so to speak, and we're able to go to a class five, which we still are.
Explain to the council and to the public a little bit about why some volunteer systems have a better rating than we do.
Your rating, your ISO rating is based on what you protect. Small departments out in the county, small departments in any county, Florida, cover rural areas, better than communities, things like that. We cover primarily commercial. You know, 90% of the, of the county's commercial industry is located inside the city of Jasper. We're responsible for that. ISO says for every certain size building, we have to be able to provide so many gallons per minute for that. An hour currently is 3,000 to 3,500 gallons a minute that we have to be able to provide at any time for extended periods of time.
Okay. And we talked at the workshop, and you and I talked many a time, about ladder trucks, and when we will need a ladder truck, touch on that just for the.
The, the city has a need for a ladder truck now. Can we purchase a ladder truck instead of an engine? No, because it doesn't have the same capabilities. You won't get as many points for a ladder truck as you will for an engine. And to be honest, Engine 1 will not last. Running first out, as Engine 1 does, it will not last another five, 10 years to pay off a ladder truck to buy an engine then. Do we need a ladder truck now? Yes, we do have a need for one. But we have a greater need for an engine at this moment.
Buying a ladder truck would not affect the ISO rate, or not decrease.
It would not decrease, and it could hurt as far as keeping a Class 5, because I need the points, I have to have the points that the engine gives me with the pumping capabilities and the water.
One, one more thing, and I'll be quiet, and the council has questions, but explain it. And we discussed this many, many a time, but when we grow, when we have larger buildings, tall, higher buildings, is going to be more tax based, obviously. And with, explain to us why then it's going to be great, we're coaching that, why is it going to be great for council to approve a ladder truck when we're exploding on 515, and even on Main Street where we have a high rise go up versus two stories?
And something that.
That means Steve Thunder will tell you.
Something to think about as far as ladder truck purchasing, yes, they are tremendously expensive. Budget wise, and as far as what the city could afford right now, we're looking at buying a 75-foot stick, which is a 75-foot ladder. 10 years from now, that truck will service the growth that the mayor's referring to on the foreline. 10 years from now, when you've got hotels that are more than three stories tall, any type of business more than three stories tall, a 75-foot stick will service it. You're only going to go into an 85-to the, ultimately, 110-foot platform, or 100-foot platform, which is, except for that, as you see on TV and things like that, the platform at the top with two or three people in it versus the typical ladder. So if we buy a 75-foot stick today, 10 years from now, it will not service what we need, assuming the growth comes back and continues like it's projected.
And Micro-Tail, I'll publish that, Micro-Tail and the hospital would be an issue for you, wouldn't it?
It would, it would.
Today it would?
Mountside Manor is three stories tall on the backside, Mac, with a daylight basin on the backside.
So how do you cover that now, or how would you cover that now?
Chicago, Cherokee County, or City of Elkhay. You're looking at 30-minute response time for me to get a ladder truck on scene. Both of those departments currently have ladder trucks. Cherokee County has several. They have platforms and sticks, depending on their need.
Now, Gilmore County or Elkhay purchased the used one, they did not purchase a new one.
They did, they purchased a new one.
Do you understand the secondary market, that they're well enough to give one if we need it?
I, I do, but I don't. Ladder trucks typically don't have the usage of an engine. Would I purchase a used engine now? Because I know what we do to them, and I can imagine what somebody that's busier does. A ladder truck, used ladder truck market is bigger, because they don't get as much use. They don't run, they don't honk for hours at a time, they don't run down the street for everything to happen. But yes, you can buy the used ladder truck at a reduced rate, as far as the value, I don't have a clue.
Let me ask you this, and you, you just said it, run it down the street for everything to happen. Do you run the, run the fire engine for a med call?
No.
If you're running for a, for a, if you get a call for a brush fire?
Yes.
You'd come do it for an automobile accident?
Yes.
Why for an automobile accident?
Because there's a risk of fire, and it carries all of your hydraulic rescue tools. One of the most common things with, with automobile accidents is a fire, that's quite common. It's practice for us, as a matter of fact, they have a 50-foot hose on the ground on car wrecks, just in case. These are the kind of things that you just don't do with a ladder truck, that's not.
If we were to decide, if this council were to decide not to buy a new engine, how, how soon will we be in danger of losing our ISO rating going higher?
I can't answer that.
I mean, I, I, one reason I'm asking is your, the equipment you're saying now, we've got 20 years old.
Right.
Would, would that, would that be, would that be?
It, it would be an issue in inspection, yes. We would lose creditation for that engine. We're already not getting credit for the 89 model, because of, simply because of its age.
Even if it functions well?
Even if it functions well, we get no credit for it. Now, if I, if ISO came in tomorrow, I can't tell you if we would pass by two points or fail by 100, I have no idea. But I do know that we get no credit for Engine 1, or Engine 3 now. We're still getting full credit for Engine 2, and Engine 1 is to a point where the reduced rates start flying.
Back in 94, when we were trying to lower to a five, I recall having to put a cannon on a.
Those were some of the items, the death guns, the loose guns, were some of the items that had to be purchased. Those are big ticket items, those are several thousand dollars. But they also pump 500 to 1,000 gallons a minute.
They give you a lot of points.
Through that one device, which now becomes standard on your truck when you buy them. We didn't know need, at that point, we didn't have need, or didn't think we did, but as it turned out, we did. They're on everything we own now because of that purchase, because they've lasted forever.
That's the first thing you put on a water, put up on a fire.
On a commercial, yeah. On a commercial, it is actually fully logged, yes.
Other questions, Council, I'll, I'll promise not to be.
One, one question, and I'm sorry, I want to clarify something. We talked about this at our third committee. The number that you throw the, throwed out, um, $47,000?
$497,500.
Does, does that have to include the $75,000 to get it like, like you need it, or is that?
That's the truck itself.
Okay, so.
The, the full equipment package is $75,000, $74,000.
So the number you throwed out, we need to add one, $75,000?
If, if we intend to finance it all together, yes.
For a toll, okay.
There are, we'll have to talk Lisa about that, there are tons of other options as far as the equipment goes. But if we choose to finance it together, yes, we would.
I know, we talked about that third, now that we're making sure that we, that we got the number.
The other thing we talked about, maybe in the future, looking at some avenues for ladder trucks. We did the engine now, and then went forward with looking at our options with a ladder truck. Maybe putting it on the highway, I think we talked about, building some, maybe.
Right.
Just some options that we could start working toward doing.
At, at the workshop, I believe Councilman Lady brought up these possible swastika. Those are feasible things. Cities, counties build fire stations, buy fire trucks, do all category things, swastika, all the time. Then hire personnel, you can't pay salaries. But there are grants out there like the SAFER grant that does pay salaries. Pays a hundred percent this year, ninety percent this year, eighty percent, gives you about six years to absorb those personnel salaries. But yes, SLOSS is an option in the future for a station on the four-lane and the truck itself.
Right now, I'm...
So this is a lot of money, obviously, and, and I understand the ISO rating. The question I have, is this the best use of dollars to either improve the safety of our citizens or your men? In other words, we could use this money and buy a lot of good stuff with it?
Right.
And is the truck where we need to be spending the money?
My personal opinion, yes, sir. Engine One's maintenance costs alone are becoming close to what the payment of the new truck will cost. That truck's reaching twenty years old now and simply cannot stand the load of a first-out engine. A first-out engine, as I explained a little bit in the workshop, runs everything. The fire truck runs everything. Engine One was designed to beat that truck because it's smaller, quicker, it's more agile, shorter wheelbase, not as heavy. Engine Two was designed for something completely different. It was designed to finish its career on the four-lane, running with a ladder truck. It has more water than Engine One. It's designed to run out of the county. We assisted the county with a structure fire this morning, taking Engine Two goes. It's designed for the long haul, though. It carries more water, more equipment, but it's too big to navigate around town twenty-four-seven. It's just not what it's designed for. Now, did I answer the question? I'm sorry.
You did.
But if my personal opinion, yes, that is, that's the best money. The tag-on purchase option also guarantees us the best price available. Because currently, the tag-on offers that we have done is the city of Covington. They've already done the legwork, spent all the money. We're simply, I mean, we're increasing their order by one truck. So we get the best deal that they only secure, and they get the benefit of having another truck order, which lowers numbers.
And we couldn't, we couldn't buy that truck just as the city for the price that they've been negotiating with that?
No. We're basically giving a group fleet price, basically. If we choose to go with the tag-on option, this is all just a proposal on my part.
So what, what is your basis on looking at the fees he's looking at per year of payment?
I, I like the fact that we won't make a payment next year. It'll be in nineteen.
Right. It won't affect next year's budget. But that would give us time to set up and figure out how we're going to...
And actually, the nineteen budget would be expected to three months, I believe, last quarter.
It's an annual payment.
Yeah.
It would be an annual payment, so it's more than...
You're looking at the delivery. If we agree to purchase now, you're looking at the delivery fall of two thousand and fifteen. But you put your first payment view three hundred and sixty-four days from now, all at night.
We get it a year later to start a first payment year later.
Yes.
Chief, one more time, give us our dates that we got to determine that.
November first. The three percent increase hits November first, which will be the...
We got, we got a meeting in October, we can make a decision on it, if this needs to happen.
As long as, as long as we agree to purchase before November first.
We can get it for that price.
We can get it for this price, and we have all that delayed payment, and as long as we agree to purchase before November.
And the interest rate is locked in?
No. Interest rate is not locked in, but...
That's just the rates to die.
That is the current projected rate. They claim to me that it could be lower, but it's time to finance it. It could also be higher. This is the current projected rate.
We were still under the optimal rating going to the GMA.
We're still going to GMA for two point seven three.
Well, now, if he orders it that, that way, could, I mean, you'd have to make a decision when you order it.
If we finance with somebody other than this company, then we will have to pay in full when it's delivered.
Right.
In other words, GMA would not be checking, we would make payments in GMA. But there would be no delays. There would be no, you know, payment put-off.
Steve, when you order, do, do we have a lock-in price at that point?
We have a lock-in price, yes. This price is guaranteed through November first.
And do we have a lock-in rate? When do we know what the rate would be?
The rate would lock in when the truck's delivered, and then you see when your, what your financing options are going to be. This is the current projected rate, two point nine seven, on a fifteen-year lease.
So we can lock in when we buy? Is that what I'm hearing?
No, when it's delivered.
When it's delivered.
Interest rate locks in when delivered.
Do you mean it locks in now?
No.
Same thing?
It'll, it'll be when we have, have the money. I mean, when the law closes, that'll be the rate.
Okay. The other question, council. You got plenty to chew on. Ann?
Well, no, just fixing that, Lisa, worst-case scenario, if the rate was so high that we did that, we could go back and get a loan with GMA and pay that one off, couldn't we not?
For ten years.
Could we, if you order it that way, though? Could we?
We could, yeah, we could refinance, in other words, with somebody else and dispose of the disagreement.
Right. If the rate was too high, this one?
GMA only finances for ten years, though. That was, I think that was later down. Now, this, this company finds, gives us a play up, have a fifteen-year on.
The numbers that Lisa threw out with GMA versus this was not much different.
No, not at all. But if, I would say that the rate went up so high, that would give us another option there with it.
So you're looking at fifteen. Are you thinking we'd have to go with the fifteen-year?
Paying it's so large. We were, we were thinking fifteen, twelve or fifteen, weren't we, Mayor?
I wonder which employee we're listing.
Please, chief?
We don't need any.
We can pause a round.
He's cracking up right there.
Oh, I'm sure he is. My phone rang, I'm on a parking truck, and I know what it's calling.
It says, it's forty-four thousand, forty-eight, what, what was the number?
Forty-two...
Forty-four, no, what number?
This truck, what part of the employee is it?
Are you talking about the payment rate?
The fifteen-year option is forty-two...
So benefit, they don't talk back.
Twelve years is just...
With that, with that, I think we've gotten past the humor of this. We're going to, we're going to, the council got this information, we'll be able to dwell on this for one month. And come October meeting, we'll give you a decision. You'll ask one more time nicely, and we'll make a decision at that time after much feedback.
Unless you want to take the action of sending it to the finance committee?
Well, we, we're actually working on the budget this month anyway, so we...
You want to take the action of sending...
No, I, I think we, we beat this thing to death.
Boy, I agree.
We either going to do it or not. Unless you, y'all can use John to compete, I don't want to be there. We have to, but I think this is, this is going to be projecting that two years from now, in the next fifteen? Fifteen years if we go, so we're looking to pay this thing off in two thousand and...
Hey, I'm not saying a hall of...
Somebody else will probably later.
Hold on, pass this to the next generation.
Yes.
Thank you, Steve.
Yes.
Thank you.
Done a good job.
Good job.
Yeah.
I'd sit, I'd sit over here, though.
Yeah, I'm not sure I do that back room.
No, because me, me love your pie.
Houston.
Houston, buddy.
Okay, item D, Lisa. Millage rate advertisement.
Counsel, I concluded in reply to the copy of the, um, this is the calculation, the rollback calculation to determine if we're going to have a tax increase if we keep our millage rate the same or not. And actually, based on property value reassessments, we have, if we keep the millage rate the same, we're going to have a slight tax increase. So I'm proposing that we roll back the millage rate from, it's a very small amount, from four point six eight three back to the four point six five five millage rate.
Okay, again, for the council and for the viewing audience, why did it go up?
It's, it's due to property value reassessments. On the sheet, if you look in that second column, reassessment of existing real property, one point three million more. They, they revalue people's properties, so...
Okay, and the entire city wouldn't revalue, revow, it was a specific portion, I believe.
Well, the county did this.
Yes, it's a county function, but back in the day, it seemed like they would reevaluate everybody's property every five or ten years, I believe, while you're busy staying long. Yeah, now, now, you might be fortunate enough to be revalued, and so your neighbor might not be. But that being said, I don't know what it said, but that, we've actually increased value. And we have also, Lonnie, we've annexed a few properties last couple of years, last, last year. What, what property on top of your head can you think?
We, we, the Old Fantasy Plant.
See, we don't, we don't, we don't want to give away those values.
That's good.
So how does inflation affect, do you affect property value, valuation going up? It's kind of new for me, so I, I mean, it has to have an impact, correct?
It does, and probably Mr. Dobbs from the county office could give you a good lesson in that.
Okay.
I can't.
And I'm not, we're not asking to approve the millage rate tonight. We're asking to have the option to advertise for it.
And, but if we don't do this, we'll have to have public hearings.
Two public hearings.
Two public hearings, and with, for such a small amount, it's not worth the effort.
Six thousand dollars is the whole total amount?
That's the difference that would make, a total of six thousand dollars.
Okay. Any other question, council?
Ready for a motion?
Yeah, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion at, we've rolled back the...
I'm excited.
We're not going to approve it?
Not yet.
Okay.
Has we advertised?
To advertise the rollback of the millage rate from four point six eight three to four point six five five.
Okay, good. Give it a second?
Second.
Motion's second. Discussion. Be it all, if everybody was showing hand. Thank you, council. Thank you, Lisa.
All's about to be advertised?
Two.
Two weeks.
And we need to vote it on at the meeting?
Uh, we'll vote on it at the next meeting.
Willa, do you have, as Mr. Rooney mentioned, do we have a schedule for our budget meetings?
Yes, I, I emailed it to everyone, but I don't have, I don't have...
It may work out, we'll get to talk about all these things, budget meeting. Okay. We all, will we vote on this yet?
We did.
We did.
All right. Item E, personnel policy. Mr. David?
I presented a social media policy that Sam and I are on the committee for the personnel policy. We're trying to update and go through these policies. Gave everybody a copy of that to add into our employee handbook with our policies. I didn't much have a copy, because I should have.
You will explain a little bit about this social media policy?
Well, it, it seems, it's a big thing nowadays with everybody having cell phones and computers. It's to protect the city, to keep people off of websites and different Facebook, First Aid.
Well, make, well, make use of the cell phone, say if you were texting or in the middle of a conversation with someone else while you're supposed to be working. Are you addressing that in your policy?
We, we are, we're not addressing particular texting. We're...
Well, that's, that's kind of social media, not...
Yeah, I would, this would more or less address as websites, on city computers.
What about the problem of private time? It's not a problem of that? Okay.
If, if they're on city...
Things stand out of trouble with it, that's okay.
If things stand out of trouble with it, they may buy them otherwise.
My, my concern is, once I get to this point, is quite often I see our employees on the phone, which I liked the days when they didn't have a phone, and you had to go find a payphone if you want to call home, see how mommas do it. But now, they don't have a whole generation's doing, but they're simply looking. And what I want is for you to look at something that we could enforce where, when you're working, especially if you're in the middle of a ditch and you're responsible for someone else, you're not looking at your Facebook accounts or your, or your text messenger friends because you have to have a phone and the, everybody does it mentality. That, I think, needs to be addressed, and it can cost people their jobs. And when, once you start addressing it. Don't you all have any issues with that, Cherokee County?
Oh, yeah, they block, they block several websites from, from being able to be on their, on their computers now. Our personal devices is fine. But now, getting back to what you were saying, would that not fall back to our department heads, our supervisors that's there on the job site, that's there, slitting it toward they can take it?
No, I, I, I don't think so. I think everybody does a mental approach. And we got to have something says that you cannot be disengaged from your job with your cell phone. Everybody's got one, and it's become part of the body, part of the equipment, part of the machinery. And I, I, I'm just watching my guys work out there, and I look around, and one guy's sitting over there on the phone, and and I say, you need to get off the phone. Well, everybody does. It's almost that mentality.
Because that is the mentality.
And so we, we've got to...
You can address that with a code of conduct. You just have a code. It can be as complicated or as simple.
We don't need to address this because, so we'll have time to finish that.
Well, you, you can address those behavioral type things with codes of conduct, where you say you can't be on your phone when you're working. And it can be very complex, or it can be very simple, it's just a list of things you don't do. You don't, I mean, you can smoke in, whatever, whatever you want to put in there.
Exactly. That's a no.
Social media, you know, we got, you got to figure out a way where we can embrace it. Not, not to say that we encourage people to be on it when they're working, but, but we can't just deny that it exists anymore. And, and we can actually make it work to our favor with communications and, and, but you have to have rules where people get on there and start bickering.
Yeah, a lot, a lot of times, I, considering using the radio, I got a guy's personal phone. I call him, it's great help, but...
We can't do that.
I don't want to hate it, I just want to be able to say, if, if you're engaged in a job, it almost needs to be with you on its, but it needs to be away from you, and that you would go get it when you've got time on your own break, that you can do that, start, start doing those things. And I have wanted to address this with the individuals, but I look over and see somebody else that I did not recommend. It's, it's, it's treating people differently.
If you make an employee leave lunch bucket, and the city manager's calling their personal phone, trying to...
That's kind of, that is a part of us.
I would find it a lunch bucket.
Yeah. But I think we can go with a safety rule that in times when it's not safe to be on the phone, they're not allowed to be on the phone.
Are we paying them to be on the phone, or are we paying them to do the job? I mean, I think we got to...
The city manager's calling on the personal phone.
You're going to have to call them on the personal phone.
The only reason I brought up, as far as the supervisor, you, you thought, you thought of a good point, if they're, if they're down here in a ditch and you've got a water main break, sharks, sharks, now, well, sharks will be there with it.
Right.
And if, if, if shark knows that if they're in a ditch supposed to be repairing a water line or a water main break, they're not supposed to be on the phone. That's what we shark's tell, say, look, that's, 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 that's why I brought up the supervisor's responsibility for, for, for that one time. That's why I brought it up.
It's a safety issue. The supervisor on, on, on site ought to be able to say, listen, put the cell phone away, we're worrying about somebody in the...
What's this? And I'm, I'm, I'm one of the world's worst, and I think everybody in this room probably is finding themselves guilty. The best place to talk on a telephone is in a car. You're, you're by yourself, and you got, you got the total time, you're driving to Woodstock. How many phone calls do you take on the way to your job? And same thing with city, driving city vehicles, if a guy has an accident. And I only regret when I back up, and you think I've got a cell phone in my hand. So you've got to, you, we got to have some, something to address, employees knowing that they, that they continue this behavior and they have an accident, it could cost them their job if they're on the cell phone.
Would you like to mean like your family?
That might be an idea. I mean, I, I don't like it, but it's something that, that if I got to address one employee, everyone knows they're going to be treated similarly.
It definitely, it definitely needs to be addressed, and, and that's a liability for the city if they're in their phones... It doesn't need to be addressed, and, and that's a liability for the city if they're in their phones. I mean, they're in the, city vehicles especially. If they're in the personal vehicles and they wreck it, that's their issue. But if they're in the city vehicle.
I, I, I surprised our insurance, hadn't already addressed it.
Well, and, and possibly we need to, I mean, I honestly try not to talk on the phone when I'm in a car.
I wouldn't miss anything. Sometimes it touches my pets. It had, I got voicemail on there, you know? I can't talk. But just, if you will along those lines, I think it's something that we're going to go into this, that's something that's happening in two thousand seventeen.
And there's a lot of policies and, and things that we were trying to work on, we just not everything at one time, of course. So, you know, this being what felt like was a really pertinent thing to bring.
I, I, and I, I, I think basically, we need to get it to the point, I think you addressed it just a second ago. The supervisor says, get off the phone, and you don't get off the phone, you've got recourse that he would.
It's his coordination.
That's, that's.
Well, that's why, that's why.
No, it does, you don't have the right to be on the phone.
That's why the supervisor, that's why they're supervisor.
Exactly.
Well, I actually watched, I'm a supervisor, I actually watched it today, and I wanted to say something about it, and I thought, well, I have gotten four or five other people I've seen doing it today, so how do I, how do I address it?
We need to get, we do need to get more consistent with that. All the supervisors need to be having the same kind of policies and following the same policies, and you're right, that would help. Because then everybody, you know, has something, well, this department does it, or that department does it, needs to be consistent all across the board.
Well, this, I'm saying you're on the right track with this, okay? And do you have anything to report tonight, other than that you're working on?
Well, do we want to, do I have any feedback on the social media policy that we gave everybody? We also introduced a American Disabilities Act policy that we did not have in there that we need.
Okay.
I don't know what you'd. I agree, those are, those are boilerplate policies that need to be in, in every.
It's just a standard.
Okay, all right. Well, we don't, we don't play anything in form of motion and that, we still, we still need to beat this seven committee and get back with what we want to, to the piecemeal in it.
Um.
So, are you ready for your final draft, or if that's all you wanted to do?
No, 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 this is just one policy.
Yeah, that's just one. I, I would also like to ask the committee to look at performance appraisals, we have talked about that. Uh, I continue to believe that it's a necessity. And, uh, I, I don't know if we want to get to the point where we write one, I just want to get to the point where we have an annual performance appraisals. Sitting down with employees, having a discussion of where they are in, in their career. And what needs to be done, or, or maybe hopefully that they're doing excellent in everything. We got some of them, we did.
We did. Uh, and the other thing we would probably want to add to that is job descriptions, if we're going to try to evaluate them on to that. So, we'll look at that and try to move that forward. Anything else that anybody think of that there won't be our next policy that we're working on? Because we're just kind of trying to ease into covering the city from liability, kind of like you talked about with the vehicles. We don't need the insurance to go up, and we don't need our workers' comp to go up.
I, if, if I, if somebody made a motion to, uh, uh.
Some of those.
Keep employees from using telephones while driving, I, I could vote for that at any time. I think we ought to do it not quite so piecemeal, I mean, there may be some really important ones that from a either an HR or a legal perspective that we're missing that we might want to do, but I, I think we ought to kind of come up with a.
And we can do that, we can.
Come up with a new policy and not, not just start throwing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Changes at this thing. And, and, and who are your committee, who's your committee member?
Son.
Are you on every committee?
On every committee.
I'm.
I heard the team of my show there pretty quick.
Okay, with that, what I like is, is have more than just one every now and then, we need to revise this book, we need to revise the book. So.
Get your, for the HR representative from the city that's involved.
Okay.
You think? Well, that, we have no action.
Right.
The goodness of God.
Yeah, and we'll start getting some more input from our workshops on, on the lines we're on those.
Even, even talking about the telephone this moment, you're right, you make the right, we make the wrong mistake and I, I, I get a phone call, I catch it. Uh, I don't really want to be liable for my, I can try to go to a fire or go into wherever I'm headed with the city of Jasper, so. Uh, it, it, got to be careful of liability, big time.
And we don't have to rethink all this stuff, we've reached out to other cities and they'll just, most of them will give you their book and say, here's what we got.
You mean, you might have talked about this before?
Carl Benson, you know, they'll do it for money. And, you know, it's a reasonable cost, but at the same time, there are other cities that we know that are very much. Protocols.
And I think ours definitely needs updating and liability that as we grow is going to be.
Well, you can, you can answer the telephone and you'll drive a hundred and fifty yards trying to think about what you've seen or done. And so, we got to address this. And, uh, but we got to do it without putting the liability on the individuals, unless he's, uh, and I, my, my chief of police coming in a few minutes, I get to ask him a question that will actually bring us back to this somewhat. But, um, with that, uh, we'll move forward, no action.
Kerry is coming up with his whole business at the next meeting.
We can do that. We can be there until we get you out of the firing.
Oh, I appreciate it.
Mayor's report, economic development, jury next to talk.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and really earlier today, I, I, I made, or earlier in the meeting, I made a point that I was planning on making this evening. One thing that I'd like to add is, you know, following the tourism season and the mountains starting to enter that season. And, and I think Carlo just made a great point, you know, he talked about the Jeep Fest positively impacting his business, especially in light of some of the downturn that he's had because of the weather. So, these events, whether it's put on by the Sheriff's Department, the Chamber of Commerce, or other organizations, I mean, these are, uh, the purpose is economic development and supporting our businesses, and like I said, he gives a great testimony on how these things help his business. And we've worked very hard to have an outstanding festival this year, and I, I think people will be very pleased. So, uh, that's really all I have to add, unless there are some questions that I can answer.
Has anything happened in Jasper, Georgia that we'd like to hear about?
I don't think you can.
Biggers County, you mean, you make a kind of business in town?
I think if you take a look around, you see work being done on the depot in downtown, uh.
People up there on the depot.
A company or a new job, El J has purchased that, he owns a business up in El J. Uh, right now, I don't have a definitive, um, answer about exactly what he is going to do with it. But obviously, he's willing to invest in it, and the end product is, even if it's sat empty, which I don't think it will, it, it looks wonderful. I think it's improved, it looked a fill of our community, makes it more inviting and interesting. So, that in itself will have an impact. But, uh, but I do know he is planning on putting a business in there. And, uh, even down outside the county, if you go down to the Tate area, you see buildings being renovated. So, people are working towards preparing for new businesses coming into the community. And the starting point is to have those facilities ready for them to move in, uh, to lease or buy.
Have you had a chance to meet with Mark Raul or anybody that builds the new tire store on five fifteen?
I have not, now, we've pretty much engaged actually with Kerry, uh, she's gotten involved with our downtown alliance committee, uh, but have not engaged with him directly about that building.
The A club, that's a big deal.
That'll be tremendous. And I, and you can see the Windsor Manor Lodge is coming up near the, near the Eagle, so again, just looking around, there's a lot of activity, a lot of growth coming. And, uh, and I will say this, one of the things that we are working on within the Chamber of Commerce and some of our committees is trying to make sure that we are taking steps to prepare for that growth, um, and pull together a lot of people to provide input. Because one of the things that we begin, what we want to do as we move forward is to have quality growth, preserve the quality of life for our citizens. As well as to grow our business community, so we're really working hard on trying to be prepared for that and, and being an asset to our community and, and our government.
Any questions, councilman? Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you, Mike.
Finance report, Lisa.
Uh, council, in your packet, you have a financial report for office. Um, I've also included the checks over five thousand dollars, most of, most of which are transtracted or, uh, no real surprise there. And, uh, for the office budget report, um, we collected, um, last month, the sales tax, uh, a hundred and two thousand four seventy-eight, which was a really good month for us. Uh, for the whole year, seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars. Uh, prior to this time, we were at six ninety-eight, one eighty-seven.
One oh two, that's, that's close to all down.
That's almost like a Christmas, December month, you know? Glad to see that. All departments and all funds are still currently under budget expenditure wise. And the SLOSS fund, um, we, at this time, the bank balance is four hundred and seventy-one thousand. And, uh, that, we, we've committed forty-four thousand on Woodbridge. And, uh, we're, we've got a, the project out, out for bid, that last paid project we put out. Um, being advertised at this time.
Don't give away a lot of this under.
I'm, I'm backing off. And the water fund, we're actually a little over budget with our revenues, which is good, and a little under budget on our expenditures. And that's about all I had to report, unless you have any questions.
That one hundred and two thousand obviously was the local office's sales tax. Did you?
Yeah, twice.
SLOSS.
SLOSS was, um, we collected seventy-nine thousand, seven fifty.
So, the one oh two is twenty-five point something, and the seventy-nine is twenty percent.
Twenty percent.
Thank you, Lisa. Questions, councilman? Uh, animal control report and bridges.
And bridges, or at least one bridge.
Very good.
I just want to get you a copy of the animal control report, which, animal control is really pretty boring, there's not much happening. Hasn't any quite a while. Uh, had three calls on dogs running loose and.
What about the geese? We talked about the geese before, the kind that you want to hear about.
The geese, uh, evidently, they're, they're still causing problems over at the duck pond in the park. Uh, a lot of people are complaining about the waste in the walkways and everything that they leave. Uh, one person got bit on the arm whenever they were sitting at the picnic table, uh, but, uh, you know.
Didn't leave any teeth print, did it?
No, no. But, uh, I have notified DNR and they have talked with me that if it becomes a big enough issue with the city that, uh, they will work with me and with the city and allow us to trap some and take them to a different location. They just change, they may come back, they might not come back, you know, they sort of use the same pond every time, so it will be a gamble as far as that. Um, the only other option would be to trap them and euthanize them. So, it's one of those two choices. And, uh, it, that has become, become a big enough problem for the city that we need to do something. And it, there's, I think the last time I counted, there was about seventy-something over there.
Did we, were some relocated when the park was closed or?
That was the ducks, that was the domestic ducks. We, we relocated about fifty of those and took them to a farm pond.
When will they go sap?
Some of them, some of them may not, it's quarter of the temperature of the weather.
Both of them sap. But, I mean, they're, they're not only at our pond, you can see them in pasture, I mean, I'm just saying, they're, they're.
That blossoms pasture, sure.
But they might need open seeds in one of these things.
They haven't given that at all. I mean, they are protected.
It's taken over the planet.
Are the Canada geese? Or all different kinds?
The geese. I feel like we live in India, I mean, they're just walking all over us.
We need a special, we need a special permit to have a goose.
Goose, goose.
The DNR is willing to work with the city in Jasper, you know.
How many complaints?
We've had a hundred.
Well, most.
Not because we're not lucky.
Most complaints we get are about people, we, we resurfaced the walkways, we resurfaced the roads, uh, they're getting in the ball fields.
Oh, yeah.
Situations like that, and they're leaving, they're leaving animal waste.
Yeah, the kids keep practice football, but.
How many others, Emily?
Last time I counted, I counted seventy.
You counted seven.
And I couldn't, no, I figured out about Crystal Lawley's.
Probably, yeah, about a hundred, that's it.
Thanksgiving. Okay, this, this was going to be a show, I just had to mention the geese, that's for sure. Move forward with the bridge, Lon.
Okay, I talked with, uh, the superintendent up at the bridge this afternoon. Uh, they are moving very fast, done a lot of good work. They have replaced the pylon, the main one. Uh, the cap abutment that is the main purpose, the bridge was closed, has been replaced and completed. Uh, the wing wall is repaired and completed, they have removed the deck boards. And they are in the process of replacing both stinger braces that run longways on the bridge. And then they'll replace the deck boards back and the bridge will be complete. And they also have asked for, uh, the mayor and myself to meet them up there at nine thirty Friday morning to do a walkthrough, look over everything, uh, approve everything. He said he wanted to make sure that they left the city property in the condition they found it as much as possible. And if there's anything that they need to do, he would be here before he left town Friday.
With that being said, can you contact the DOT, uh, ref who can open the bridge legally? We can't do it without their permission. Uh, and we might be allowed it on Saturday or Friday morning, that'd be fixed.
So, they have really done a lot of good work.
I was glad to see them up there yesterday in the rain.
They moved in Monday. But he said.
Worked happy to sit in.
Yes, they said they'd be here on the eleventh, and they got here and he said, I just can't put my men out there in this, this weather.
Right, okay. Well, Scott, Lonnie, talk a little bit about the storm, I'm going to bring David in right behind you, and then I'll get the police from fire.
Okay, please, when the storm came through.
David, if you will come up now, I'd like to talk.
We had, uh, a lot of timber broken, there had been some houses that trees have fell on. Uh, as of right now, the most serious injury I heard of was, uh, a gentleman, a young man, and his brother was coming towards Jasper in the luck area, and a tree fell across the roof of their car, and they did have to rest them in the kennel stuff. But most everybody else's injuries have been minor that I've, you know, that we've been notified. We've been down at the ELC for two days or a day and a half. And, uh, a lot of activity down there, a lot of nine-one-one calls coming in, the power companies, the road crews. Um, everybody's working very, very hard to correct this, they've done a fabulous job.
David, segue into this, and tell a little bit about like how you kept the water on the farm.
Yeah, the generators that, uh, the council and mayor got have been used extensively over the past, probably Monday night about nine o'clock. Uh, the generator at the water plant has run, done great. Generator at the wastewater plant has run and done great. We would be in a mess, uh, especially on that side, on the Montview side. Uh, I think I got the power back on over there yesterday, but the amount of time that it was off, it was then, what we would probably had to, was maybe reseed it. It was off so long, uh, I don't know if the bugs would have been able to live that long out there. So, it's very valuable that we got those. One at the water plant, it's been coming on and off, basically, like Cal's power has every day. Uh, the one, uh, generator's created, the one fifty KW, the one fifty KW at the wells. And we also got another two hundred horsepower, um, generator that we had bought, uh, earlier in the year. The council had bought, running at the wells right now, so we're running everything we can as we speak. We have all three of those on, cold road is still not restored. And the only customers that we had, uh, that were actually out of water, we were able to do. water, we were able to do some bypasses and stuff to keep Hickory Cove, the bottom part of Hickory Cove hot, but the top part, which the city agreed to take over for the Schultz's, um, we have a generator running up there right now too, they didn't, as of 5 o'clock, they didn't have power.
That was neat, uh, back in the spring, just by luck, the sheriff's department gave us a generator.
Yes.
That we didn't know if we were going to be able to use or not, but they gave it to us, and they were able to use it to get the Schultz and the other people on the line.
Yes, it's just a small, uh, like a one or two horsepower booster pump, but we were able to hook up this generator to it, and it's running it right now, and they were really the only people that I know of that were out of water, you know, for any amount of time, and then some of others recovered until we got the valve switched or something, they didn't blow pressure for a few hours, but once we got that switched over, they should have had water, and so only, I think there was six or seven majors on the Schultz Park that runs back toward Greenview, uh, but all of them should have, uh, water back now, and we can run that until, we have really, already estimates on Cove Road, I know they're still working on it now, but there's broke holes and everything, it's just a disaster.
If, uh, we had not had the generators, we've been out of water probably been hours after the storm.
And it would have been a disaster on the silver side, you know, the generators.
But it couldn't have been much, wouldn't have had water pumped, it'd been a disaster for the mayor.
But still, it's still a million gallon downpour of bugs, but you've got people out of weather, no water running into it.
Oh, yeah, well, I tell that, I tell that, kinda like being the chicken, but the chicken don't call a farmer when they're out of water, our customers do, so.
Yes, and, uh, so, yeah, we've put all of those to use, and also another thing to think about at the same time is, um, you've got to have water to have fire protection.
Right.
You know, so it's, it's on both sides, uh, we would probably, um, Steve and I would probably have to close some businesses, you know, because of lack of pressure without the generators, and, you know, you don't have the fire protection, so it's, uh, it's been saving grace on this.
Thank you, guys, David, thank you for turning around, coming back and giving that report, I appreciate it.
And David, we're just glad you weren't asking for money, we're just glad you're good.
I'm not asking for nothing.
Happy to be.
We appreciate that tonight.
I'm a big fan of David, oh, by the way.
Chief Love.
Before we do that, can you?
Oh, we'd like to recognize Mr. Looney, Chief, uh, Councilman Looney.
The commissioner was, uh, in the, uh, hall before the meeting started for a proclamation signing, and he asked me to announce while we had the opportunity to put it on TV, that as of 5:15 today, there were 1,500 REA customers without service, and 601 Georgia Power customers without service at the county, uh, so, we're not finished yet, there's a lot of work, I know, uh, Amocole EMC, uh, we've set up for 100 people for meals at the college tomorrow night and Friday, so there's a lot of people still in the area, uh, working to restore the power, roads are, are open, but many of the roads still have lines running across them lower than, than what is, we would think of as being the same, so, wow, uh, roads are open, uh, people need to be careful in their use and, uh, and be safe, because there are some situations out there that are not, uh, safe conditions.
Okay, I want to tie into that, uh, North, Honeywood is still out, and I, I made a statement at the beginning of the meeting, that I called John Fouse, and he was laying, and his house is out of power tonight, uh, but these, the reason, a lot, a lot of roads were, um, blocked in with a tree debris intertwined, just storm damage, but in the city of Jasper, every one of those roads that were closed had electrical wires in it, and just last month, we went to a lecture from Amocle Electric and Georgia Power over at Amocle Electric, and they said to us, every wire that's on the ground, consider it live, and you can't ask me, guys, to go in and, and cut those wires, cut those, even though you know it's probably not live, but one time it will be, and it'll kill some people, and we got the wires down on the north side of town, I was there right before I came to City Hall at night, and I saw children running around, jumping over electrical wires, laying on the ground, so if any parents seeing this tonight, get your children away from those electrical wires, get yourself away from those electrical wires, they're all over the county, all, all it takes is one person to fire up a generator wrong and leave it off, open, those wires become energized, so it's dangerous, great? Jim, anything else?
No.
Appreciate you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Kansas Police Department, in the month of August, responded to 1,150 calls, fined 64 motor vehicle accidents, issued a total of 140 citations for following, one for DUI, 111 for speeding, one seatbelt, five shotlifting, one uninsured motors, 25 miscellaneous violations, three suspended or revoked, Georgia State Patrol issued 103 for grand total in City Court, 250, seven state, one for issue, uh, one for felony shotlifting, one for misdemeanor shotlifting, one for ordinary misdemeanor, ordinary perjury felony, one battery misdemeanor, one entering hollow, one criminal trespass misdemeanor, one theft by a citizen, stolen property felony, miscellaneous calls, responded to 36 long calls, 25 disorderly, three harassment, six trespassing, 127 suspicious activity, 20 domestic streets investigated, two burglaries.
And a quick update for the police department on the hurricane.
Hurricane, like I said, we were actually, when you compared to the county, I stayed, went over to the sheriff's office several times during all that, and they, they really had their hands full out there, uh, we were blessed in the city, our main thing was the, the main street right there, which had not power at which part, I think 22, 23 hours we were out of power, so, uh.
Well, you say that you got to drive through Honeywood.
Yeah, but we came all last night, I think about 7 o'clock, uh, but I didn't have to call any additional personnel in, I, I had my detectives come in uniform, but I let my all duty personnel rest, and we got through it, and it was, uh, could have been a lot worse here in the city, but thank God it wasn't.
Questions, Council?
How much, how much did that affect you guys, or just, police department being without power?
Um, administratively, you know, I, I had to send my girls home, there's no lights, there's no, they do all their stuff with computers from entering citations and answering phone calls, there's no phone, no nothing, but, but, uh, we got through, and our generator, I think, will be up and running by Friday, so there was, guy came up and did something with the gas and got it set up, so, uh, but, uh, but it, we got through, we got, we had cell phones on, the, uh, the radios and stuff, at one time, the 911 went out, and they called us, we had radios, and they said, we got one walkie talkie, and he called Matt Dawkins and me and said, hey, they have to call you to dispatch calls, and then it quickly came back up, so, thank God for that.
When we do these, uh, events, and you have to add a personnel, just ballpark, what's that cost you? I mean, that was kind of a blighted up a question, but.
Well, it depends on the size of it, uh, you know, if it's, if the, if this is a guy's off day, they're going to be daytime and a half, because they've already worked, and we called them on our off day, and they, uh, don't know around about figuring what it is, uh, the storm, uh, really didn't cost me a whole lot, I think, maybe two hours overtime, so we got, but, the events such as Memorial Festival and Jeep Festival, I cancel all off days and bring all personnel in, because, you know, people don't realize, you know, we have all these festivals and stuff, you know, I know it's great for town, and I, I think it was about a lot of it, but it, you just heard 1,150 calls, and we're having these festivals, people are still wrecking, still steaming, still fighting, longer going off, and, you know, world will come, so, but we have to have personnel at crowd control, luckily, we haven't had any major events, Jeep Fest went slower than I've ever seen it this year, it really did.
Is there an opportunity for off duty guys to cover that and let the private sector cover it?
I, I have mentioned that.
I'd just like to know kind of what that would look like.
On several occasions, Larry Callahan, he's been in charge of that festival, I know it's a lot bigger event to me, and, you know, they use off duty personnel, they use a total of about 18 officers, and they range from drug task force narcotics units to Georgia State Patrol and GBI agents working, and, you know, cause Apple Festival going on, well, they're still wrecking, fighting, steaming in Gilmore County, so they have off duty personnel, I know that's a quite bigger, more bigger event, but, uh, they pay those guys off duty, but for the most part, we use on duty personnel at town and a half, as a matter of fact, uh, this, the police hero came in while I got off, you see him, he talked to me, and he said, I'm, I'm giving you tomorrow, and I'll be hiring an off duty officer to maybe work across the wall for Sunday, I said, well, that's good, and I'll leave him on that.
That might be something we'll go to in the future.
Like $200 is way cheap on permit too, quite honestly, but.
Keep, keep an example, years and years when the city budget was much less, the police department was 20%, and the fire department was 20%, I wouldn't give them a penny more than 20%, they had to live with it, today, I think that a budget's running about 33% each, so we might have to have a hard talk with them, but their salaries are going up, all, everything is going up proportionally, but new cars, new trucks, whatever, uh, 66% don't leave us much, third, the 33% we have left to run the entire city out of public safety, so, I'm a little bit stuck out, got to know, looked at that number today, so, anyway, look at that, look at that, I don't care, but, uh, but it is, it is, uh, I mean, the general fund now is how many millions of dollars, and years ago, it was just like 180,000.
Close to 5, yeah.
Pardon?
Close to 5.
I mean, so, uh.
No, back then, we had cow grades, we're on New Bull.
Come on, you get first, appreciate it, guys, true, true, but there's, there's much more.
Oh, yeah.
As we start looking at, as Son was just talking about, getting, having these, uh, extra people being paid by whoever's putting on the festival, that kind of stuff, can you, you know, I did it tonight, but eventually give us something to look at as to how, what that might add per cost, I mean.
What it would save us?
Yeah, what it'd save you, plus what it would cost us to, even just say an hour, and then we could kind of say, okay, if you need them 10 hours, this is what it's going to cost.
And there's a lot of off duty work, I mean, as we've got bigger, I mean, for instance, Walmart hires us off duty during Christmas, and, uh, was it Black Friday, is that what they call it, yeah, and the, the Coaklands rodeo they have, they hire officers to direct traffic and that stuff, but, uh. I mean, it's, we're going to work the parade, we're going through Halloween, we're going to our rodeos.
Right, yeah, I mean, we have some things we have to do, as the city.
The private sector won't have the managers and stuff like that, and, you know, we use the fire department, and, and that should be privy to it as well.
Right.
Paid off duty, uh, not just the police thing, because if we used to be on, we work with the.
We're bringing the world to your lease, obviously.
We can limit overtime to a point where you get to hire one more officer, that'd be a good thing, all right?
Really good.
But, yeah, I'd love for you to just bring to us what, what would make us off duty, what we would, what we would pay somebody as off duty?
Off duty rate, uh, running right now is anywhere from 25 to 30 dollars an hour. Now, where I came from, in Atlanta, I mean, that was it 20 years ago, 22 years ago, but they're 40 and 50 dollars an hour for off duty, I mean, but back in the day, when I, when the Braves were doing good, and I had to work down there, we were working comp time, we didn't want to get paid for it, now someone has stepped up, I guess with the police union and all the cops, you see, Braves, Yankees, or Falcons, they're being paid instead of on duty, not all of them, but for the most part.
Take care of their own livelihood and stuff, right?
Thanks, Chief. Chief Love.
You got a clean?
I promise you, Doctor, you're a good man, too.
It's on the hill, right?
Good evening again, did I mention I own a fire truck? For the month of August, city fire department responded, responded to 122 murders, I'm sorry, 127, I can't see. No structure fires inside the city, one outside, no vehicle fires in, one outside, no grass or brush fires in or outside the city, 15 motor vehicle accidents with injuries inside, four outside, 45 murders, no corps responses in, 35 outside, 16 other calls in, 10 outside, as of the end of the month, 998 calls, fire inspectors looking for sets of plans for construction or renovation, conducted 16 inspections.
Questions, Council? I think we're about beating you up enough, Mr. Love.
Thing I love is all that.
Mr. Fouse is not listening to you, so we won't get a J Y S A report, being no other business comes for this council, we're going to pass a motion.
So, what?